Ready now. For now.
Yes.
Okay, I'll call the work session for more coming in. For the commissioners. In the session. And I want to add on the agenda today is a uh. Twenty twenty-three twenty-four values and taxes report from uh associate Mike Norman. We'll turn it over to Mike. Well, you take it away.
Right, thank you, Chair Sykes, and. Thank you for. Having me come. Talk about current year values and taxes, um Valerie, if you could bring up the. The uh. Powerpoint.
I'll get that right.
Cause I don't have it memorized.
Oh.
I did a couple of weeks ago when I created.
Just one second, sorry.
Yeah, Long Years Weekend was. Hard on you again.
And we don't have anything on here for that, right?
Um, it's in the packet. Yeah.
Yeah, the uh.
On the work session, there's a different, yeah. Yeah, I'm on it, it's just a work session, but it says no attachments and no speakers.
Yeah, that's what I said.
The uh. Agenda application you use now wouldn't let me attach a PowerPoint. So I just sent the PowerPoint to Matt and Valerie, since they wanted to run into a PDF and put it on.
He's got his. Yes, man.
I looked at it this morning, now I can't figure out how to get back.
And I may have done something wrong.
I know, I just do, I was trying, I went back here to listen, and I got the same thing, oh, right there, packet.
Well, yeah, okay.
Board of Commissioners work session, and where he says the agenda just go broke out now.
Yeah, but it won't do anything.
Oh, it doesn't give you nothing, no, it doesn't give you anything.
All right, I've got it right here.
Well, it's possible.
Oh, well, I can watch this. Go back.
You there.
Yeah, this is where it was. This is where I looked at it this morning, I just.
That too, some different.
Yeah. I looked at mine this morning.
Just got it right, we got it.
Well, I'll just watch on this scale. Listen to the excellent person.
I told, I told you only had this training, but I was never gonna give it. Well, I didn't have it in the wrong place, but I got the package.
Might be last year's, but you got it.
All right. And then I guess Matt, you'll be my clicker.
Yep.
Someone's gonna get it to click.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Values this year, we, you know, we're still on the increase, uh taxable values three point nine million, uh market value nine and a half million. Um, large exemptions, S I P with one point two million and enterprise zone, uh four point seven million. Well, you get into some comparisons for the previous year on the next slide, go ahead. Well, maybe the next slide after this, and the. Total certified uh property taxes to collect fifty-seven point seven million, the accounting portion of that is sixteen million. Just a couple of quick notes, the week of uh November thirteenth, uh we collected over forty million dollars in property taxes. An additional twenty million in S I P and easy payments, um those. That's with uh two new uh tax collection staff that had started about three weeks prior to them. So, uh we were pretty busy that week, that wasn't stressful, uh long week. Then as of December eighteenth, when I completed this uh. Presentation, we had about two and a half million dollars of current year money left to collect, so out of the fifty-seven million, we had about two and a half million left to collect, and then. Uh, an additional million dollars for prior years that, you know, were to link with. Down, we're compared to uh two thousand twenty-two, um collecting just a scosh over uh. Uh, excuse me, value, uh taxable value is just a little over two hundred million, um most of that is from expiring. Uh enterprise zone exemptions, and then, of course, the three percent assessed value increase is statutory on all of the property. You know, residential, commercial, and industrial new construction, along with the three percent increase, does contribute just. Not to the level of of Amazon's expiring exemptions, um and and this probably be about the last year for any large. New value coming on the roll due to an Amazon expiring exemption, their original two sites were um standard enterprise zone exemptions. At one time, there was probably six or seven, it's different exceptions on each site, and those were finally winding down, those were. A total of five-year exemptions.
What was that? One for each building, or one for building and one for equipment, or a combination?
A combination, the uh, the buildings uh were a five-year. Exemption, and then the uh equipment, uh we call it personal property, basically the racks, servers, uh those were on a three-year exemption. The standard enterprise zone program, uh if 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 you replace any equipment or any component, whether it be a building or. Not so much building, but any, any kind of machinery or equipment or personal property. During the exemption period, you lose the exemption, have to pay back those taxes. Unless it was like a fire or some catastrophic thing, you know, that was out of their control. So that's why there were so many different um. Enter or exemptions for each site depending on the type of property it was, so, you know. A few years ago, we were seeing, you know, three or four, maybe five hundred million dollar uh value increases, and that's when those. Uh three-year, the bulk of Amazon's value is in the uh personal property racks and servers by seventy-five percent, so. You know, they would come off uh their exemption, and we'd see those larger uh value increases, and now we're just seeing. A little bit of it with the buildings and some of the the machinery that's standard um in there, like the the cooling systems and things like that.
No, uh I don't know if you follow private personal intelligence at all, but. The uh, you know, that's a, there's a big surge going on, and the cloud providers, uh AI uses tremendous amounts of. Computing power, and a lot of them are switching over, I don't know if you heard this company called Nvidia. Their stock is like, I wish there were lots of that stuff, used, they called GPUs instead of CPUs, you know, uh they're used in gaming, that were perfect for AI. It was, you know, so I asked that guy from Amazon when I met him, you know, he's the head of the legal department there at Amazon, and. I tried to pick it, man, I said, so you guys gonna, you know, rental for all your. Data blocks of GPU using that smile. He was like, tell me then, now, if they were to do that, you know, beneath the AI demand, would you be uh reeval, reevaluating? And they go back into another three-year exemption?
No, they, they quit the three years. And, well, I, they, okay, potentially, they could on the pretty uh. Sites that don't have an exemption, um they couldn't, you cannot get another enterprise zone exemption on it, existing property, like the buildings couldn't receive it. But if they get it all, their racks and servers out. Um, and put in something new, they could absolutely apply for an exemption.
Just like these things, the. Technology grows so fast, you know, you could be literally obsolete in three years.
Right.
So we have to upgrade in three years, then.
Right, um I. I don't know if that. Yeah, I don't know, I do, the reason I'm kind of stumbling here, and I apologize for that. Amazon currently has three long-term or fifteen-year exemptions, plus six more on the books. Uh, two of them are being constructed right now, so if they're willing to go to a fifteen-year exemption, they must not see a big change in technology as of yet. I, I'm making a leave there, um that Amazon did not tell me that, I'm just, you know, making my own deduction. So, could, could be. Uh. Where were we, so, yeah, they're just talking about the, the, most of the increases we've been seeing lately in the taxable value. Has been due to expiring exemptions, and I pick on Amazon a lot, but you'll, you'll see that later on in the presentation online. Um, and I'm not necessarily picking on them, just, they're, they're a big part of Marl County. And, and even though we have a lot of new other types of new construction, you know, a lot of building, a lot of new houses, subdivisions going on in both. Irigan and Borden, I mean, we just signed a rural subdivision uh earlier today, um but, you know, those. Properties, you know, house sales for two or three hundred thousand dollars, just can't keep up with the billions that, you know, uh Amazon and, you know. These other big investments, you know, Land West is making a big investment, um and so, so it, it helps, and it, and what really helps is the cities. Um, or the, or some of the smaller districts, cause that, that value will, especially in the cities, you know, uh at a hundred lot subdivision in Borden, and that gets built out. That's gonna be huge effort, but. Our market value went up uh almost three hundred million, um basically, that's just uh. That's a close number to our market value, it doesn't necessarily include. Like value for like the national forest land, the bombing range, cause it's. It's exempt, but it's, it's more than exempt, it's not every taxable, so it really doesn't include that, um but, so it's basically the value of everything before exemptions. Uh, before like enterprise zone S I P and other types of exemptions. We're certified tax, uh fifty-seven million, almost fifty-eight, uh you know, an increase of three point six million dollars, and that's, you know. That's taxes for every district, all the cities, fire districts, libraries, schools, as well as the county. Um, just. Some general information, uh. In the Borden city limits, the, the total tax rate uh increased this year, um because the city's bond levy increased significantly. Last year, they utilized some enterprise zone money to uh. You know, to offset their bond obligation or subsidize it, uh this year they did not do that, so, you know, uh. Last year, the bond rate was forty-four cents, um this year was a dollar eighty-eight, so, so quite a few, uh we had quite a few calls uh from residents inside the city of Borden, I'm wondering why. Your tax bill increased.
Um, they didn't call you last year.
They did not call me last year.
Cause it went down a significant amount last year.
Right, and then, you know, the outer uh rural Borden and Irigan areas, um the tax rates a few cents lower than it was last year. There was no new districts or no, no new bonds, um or anything, um the, the bonds that uh. Uh are out there, that's what made the tax rates go down because of the district's value went up. Uh, the Hepner city limits, the tax rate decreased a little, but the city of Hepner still has a high tax rate by themselves, just the, the city's own levy is. Ten dollars and sixty-two cents, which itself is over the major five limit of ten dollars for combined gen- uh general government, so. Always get a lot of calls, a lot of people um frustrated with the, the tax bill that live in the city of Hepner.
Well, evaluations were on the front of that, right, I've got a lot of complaints.
Yeah, last year, they did, um we hadn't reappraised in, in the city of Hepner in several years, so this summer, my appraisal staff uh reappraised. Uh, inside the city of Hepner, um and, you know, when, when, you know. We call ourselves a reappraisal county, you know, I don't know if you guys remember years ago, it used to be like a six-year cycle, um with ninety fifty and the late nineties, that kind of went away because. You know, county funding. Uh, really got reduced, uh but we try to keep to some type of schedule like that, and. My goal would be every six years, but with, you know, we're so busy with all the new construction going on, um we don't necessarily have the time to. To get back to that.
When did the last time you had done it?
I think two thousand and five, so it would have been eighteen years.
You back inside the two thousand twenty-three evaluation stage of thing?
No, we, we.
I mean, other than the just percentage increase.
Right, yep, yep.
But, but the, the actual physical evaluation, appraisal wasn't done.
No, I mean, unless we needed to go there for some kind of, you know, uh.
So that's why they need everybody to see it's such a job.
Well, I, well, what, what really made it jump was um. In two thousand twenty-one, there was a large amount of. There, there were a lot of home sales in Hepner, and they were selling for very high prices compared to what we had them on the roll for, so. Uh, in two thousand twenty-two, we trended all the values up, I think thirty-five percent, you know, across the board for residential properties. Uh, and that thirty-five percent is a pretty significant increase, and when the market value gets further away from the assessed value and. And the compression alleviates some of the compression, then, then people pay more taxes.
So.
That, yeah, just let me finish uh real quick here, and so, when, when I see. You know, twenty, thirty percent trends, market trends in a year, that's a very good indication that we need to hit that spot, and we need to reappraise, and we need to look at every property. And we need to, you know, uh basically start everyone from square one again, cause they've had increases for eighteen years, and, you know. Pretty soon, things get out of line, you know, if, if you have anywhere from a five to a thirty-five percent increase. Every year, over so many years, pretty soon, your cumulative trend is up there in the hundred, two hundred percentile, and that just, it skews things, you know. You can have a, you can have a garage that's worth a hundred eighty thousand dollars or something, you know, because it's just. A multiplier, you know, compounding uh issue, so we got out, we reappraised, some properties went up in value, but most went down a little bit. Um, actually had, just talked to uh resident Henry yesterday, that her property went down uh twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars, and that really bothered her.
Bothered?
It bothers her, she wanted, she liked it, cause you want to be able to sell it someday, or. So, you know, can't please everybody.
Well, that's, like, it's different time, so, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, in, in other cities in Marl County, are they behind?
Well, not as far behind, we get Irigan in seventeen, um outer or a Borden in eighteen, um outer Borden in nineteen. Not much happened in twenty because of COVID, um. Twenty-one, I think we were just playing catch-up, and I was uh down on staff. And the appraisal, I think I had one of them was out uh on maternity leave for nine months, um so we got back at it in twenty-two. Uh, did I own Lexington, and then did Hepner this year, and um I'm also down uh in a praiser. Actually, two uh right now, and I'm, I'm not sure. How, what we're gonna get done this year, I'd like to start on rural South County, cause we're kind of in the same boat, um uh just needing some. We need to get an praiser out there, get those properties looked at.
Is your prasers, do they have to go through the same trade of training as a, as a commercial praiser or residential, like college degree and all that?
Well, no, it's a, it's a different, different designation, um but there is. Uh, uh, training, um and a exam that's put on by the Department of Revenue, and they have a certification, and there's uh continuing education hours. Um annually, so um, and it's a different certification than like, you know, a Doug Beric or a.
Yeah, cause there, there's a shortage, a big shortage there, it's, okay. We got a little sidetracked.
Yeah, no worries. Oh, we just picked on Hepner, so uh I own, properties in the I own school district. It's on increase two, um. Because of their I own school bond. Uh, rate went up, cause uh the district's value went down, um. Most of the property within my own school district is resource land, farmland, they don't have uh big industrial uh value or utility value. Like the wind towers, uh Shepherd's Flat, and Willow Creek, they've been exempt for many years due to an S I P, uh the gas transmission line. Uh, it's currently their largest component of value, but um. Uh, two years ago, they filed an appeal to Department of Revenue, and I think they, they negotiated a settlement which dropped their value, I think it. They also negotiated a drop again for this year, so that's why uh properties in the I own school district saw an increase in tax rate this year. Always get calls from that, that's a pretty healthy, uh I think that's a three or four dollar bond, um the rate without.
So, right now, we only have the SIP and the uh enterprise, so we don't have, we have a pilot, but it's just, it's just, have to come online, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Let's open on that one, okay, uh the Irigan city limits, uh a few cents lower than last year, just because their value increased in there. Uh, so their s- city bond levy went down, and rural South County the same, a few cents lower. So, I, I think Bobby Childers told me yesterday, she hadn't had any appeals filed yet, so, so we. Uh, we haven't had any real property, any local real property appeals of over five or six years, which I, it isn't from a lack of jacking up values, like.
So when is the deadline?
Uh, December thirty-first. So we'll jump right into uh S I P exemptions, I'll start with Willow Creek, um down west of I own. Uh, one of our first projects in County, uh wind projects, um they. Give a community service fee payment of forty-two thousand dollars, it's unchanged this year, county gets a portion of that. Um, their exempt tax amount was three hundred and twenty thousand, exempt value is about ten million, uh we share this project with Gillum County. Uh, when this, when the agreement was negotiated back in the, oh, uh, I think two thousand seven or two thousand eight. They negotiated some upfront name and for the schools, um the first five years of the exemption has been satisfied, and this is the last year. Um, so it will be fully taxable next year, that will help out the I own school district, uh get, get a few more dollars in their value, they. You'll, you know, it's, it's funny how the, the uh value for the project has really decreased over the last three or four years. You know, just because, you know, their, their valuation, um given partner revenue, they, they include their benefit from the exemption, you know. So they have an exemption, but their company is more profitable, so they're, they're more valuable, so I'm curious to see what they'll, what they'll come on next year. So.
So the exempt tax amount is how much should you be paying in taxes, it's a lesson to.
Yeah, so, so if the ten million, three hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred twenty dollars was taxable, they would have paid three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in taxes.
Then based off, you know, so at first I thought, like, so when it comes off the S I P, then next year we'd be expecting three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but like you say, Department of Revenue puts a value on to the SIP.
Yep, so. This would be my first experience with the wind project coming on the exemption, so, you know, if I had some earlier, I could maybe model that and do some. Uh, you know, estimates, but uh. I would just hope that it, it isn't going to be, I think it's almost cut in half from last year, and I don't think it's gonna be cut in half again, I would hope it'd be something.
So, you know, they didn't really give any numbers, but I know that the commissioners from the government county made a comment. I'm assuming is that, that um some of their wind projects came off, and they didn't take as big of a hit as they thought, now what that means, I don't know, they, they just, they didn't take as much into this.
And this is a fairly small project, um if we get how many maybe lots it is, it's. Less than a hundred, so.
Well, when Shepherd's Flat repowered.
It doubled.
Doubled.
Their value almost doubled.
And that, the state handles that value, you know.
And part of that, too, was um they, they repowered, not that there was anything, you know, physically or mechanically wrong with. Uh, with their uh turbine blades and gearboxes, it was uh. Uh, the, the turbine manufacturer came up with a different blade design and gave them about, I think it was six or seven percent more production.
So they needed their N S L to take.
No, it wasn't the N S L, it was just the blades and the gearbox, um so.
So they didn't have to decommission the ball, they just.
No, no, they just uh did them one at a time toward the old stuff down, and put the new stuff up, and in a week or so, they, it was producing power again.
No, next year, they did the same thing, but they did it before they built it, right, didn't they, didn't their repower, didn't they go back to sit before they built it and, and up their. Blade length or something?
Well, uh, I think it's for the east project, they're getting ready to construct, um they uh. They.
What was our amendment, yeah, remember?
Yeah, that's for the east project, it's not, so what they're gonna be constructing here, I think what Eric was talking about, the road agreement with the east. That's under the umbrella of the original S I P, or even.
Yeah, right, I know.
So, so the, it, they were permitted originally for, I think, five hundred total megawatts, um but, you know, technology's increased the last two or three years, instead of having a. A two point five megawatt tower, now they're like two point eight or something.
That didn't change our tax collection.
Uh, it could, yeah.
So I think last year day, what they did is, or my understanding was, is that they had some towers that were planned in Yumitola County, and they were relocated.
Yes, and that, that's part of the two, that's part of the two, but there, there's also a, a total megawatt increase, so I think another fifty megawatts.
No, he said today that he's coming back with a, a new SIP agreement for, for east.
Road agreement.
No, he, he told me that, he talked about the SIP, the guy who was here.
Yeah, he's, he's looking to come with another SIP agreement.
Yeah.
Not sure where, which.
Well, okay, I.
For, for we released. Well, I, I assumed he'd already talked to you.
Alright.
Cause he says, I'm gonna get ahold of you, and we're gonna sit down and talk about, um, you know. Where we go with the new one, I assume it'll be kind of like the last one. You know, I don't know.
I guess we'll wait and see what they have to say.
Yeah, I just wondered if he'd talk to you, yeah, okay.
Uh, next, yeah, I think we're done with Willow Creek. Uh, the Echo Wind Project, um it actually was built about the same time of Willow Creek, uh their S I P payment, seventy-eight thousand. The county gets the lion's share of that, um and does not participate in the community service fee, um. Uh, this is kind of a similar situation as Willow Creek gets her last year of exemption, and the, the value really dropped. And we share this project with uh Yumitola County. And it's the last year, it'll be coming on, um full taxable next year, um and similar to the Willow Creek agreement, they um. Negotiated, uh the county negotiated some extra money uh in the first five years of the agreement forward, and I, I can't even, if that was for school or whatever. Uh, Shepherd's Flat, um. Their payments are pretty uh. It's right around the same every year, um. At one point, almost one point five million, community service fee of five hundred thousand, and then an additional amount to the county of almost a million. Uh, the county does participate in the community service fee here, and of course receives all of the additional amount, um their exempt tax amount was five point eight million. Uh, exempt value, three hundred and fifty-eight million dollars, that's, it was about two hundred and. Million dollars, that's, it was about two hundred and twenty. Uh last couple of years while they were doing the repower. Then it's it's in this S I P agreement that twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars of the county's. Uh portion goes to uh help fund Korea. Uh this project has three years remaining um and and caviness. Uh this was a uh New York company sold this project to Brookfield Renewables. Uh Canadian company a few years back, and then Brookfield has initiated the repower. Portland General Electric's Certy Plant um. Two point two million dollar payment this year, five hundred thousand dollar community service fee. One point seven million dollar additional, county does not share the community service fee. Their exempt tax amount this year is about four point seven million, exempt value is about three hundred and eighty million. P G E is interesting, you know, last year this was a six hundred million dollar plant. Next year might be a six hundred million dollar plant, but this year was only a three hundred million dollar plant.
So the Department of Revenue gives you any reasonable way to wild one?
Well. Yes and no, you know, they they value. Essentially assessed properties uh or value, they value the whole company, so. You know, P G E is more than just the Certy Plant. And so, you know, they have their whole distribution side and stuff, so. I don't know, or or maybe they didn't negotiate a good price with B P A. Who knows? I mean, I don't get that kind of level of detail. I uh I just know that it it's challenging to try to model. Uh some of these larger utilities like that, uh large companies, you know, uh. When when Century Link got uh, no, Century Tel got bought out by Century Link. Um about ten or twelve years ago. I think the county, the value for, you know, all of the Century Tel's phone system. Lines and everything here in the county like tripled. Just because, you know, Century Link was a much more larger Danish national company and. I think Century Tel was just a little kind of regional, but and so, yeah, that the the assets, the phone lines. The phone buildings, nothing changed, but.
Except most people got rid of their land.
Well, yeah. You know, Century Link, which is now Lumen Technologies, you know, they they were under appeal a couple of years ago. I don't know, was you or the previous commissioner, we had to write some refund checks um back to Lumen, um pretty substantial ones.
What what uh Mike, can you tell us? Okay, what what is the level where the state takes over and value away from, give us an example of a large. Well, the largest operation that you've got.
So so for Department of Revenue to value property, it either has to be a utility property like. P G E Columbia Basin, these wind farms, solar farm, phone company, DirecTV. Uh U S Cellular, Cell One, airlines, TV stations, uh railroad, barge lines. Um those are automatic, no matter how big, how small, uh when when um. When wind wave within its infancy uh years and years ago, when Nate Urbegas. Uh you know, built it and they had, you know, thirty-five customers here in Heffner. They were uh, you know, valued by the Department of Revenue. Now, its manufacturing has to be worth uh has to be valued at over a million dollars and they have to make something. So um, you know. J coil fabricating. Might be worth a million dollars and yes, they manufacture, but I doubt that the Department of Revenue would take it. Um you know, but if we had a uh. You know, somebody that stamped out, you know, for metal buildings or something at a big, large scale. The Department of Revenue would handle that, cause they are the experts in that, all food processing um. The uh Amazons, of course. Tillamook, yeah.
What about the Granger's new operation there at Patterson Fair? It's probably done by the revenue.
Nope.
I think that was worth about twenty-five mil.
Uh no, that was the the train unloading facility. No, it's about seventy million.
The one that put hundred cars.
Yeah, about seventy million.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Okay, yeah.
So we we value that locally, cause we're not really manufacturing. Right, right, the big food process, uh cause you know, they're just unloading wheat and then reloading it onto a barge and so. You know, like like uh Lamb Weston, you know, they're taking out a potato, making it into something different, packaging it and then.
Yeah, but if the grain that came in, the processing.
Absolutely, and like the large dairies, we value them locally, you know, through my canyon farms. Tillamook though, you know, where they all the milk to, of course, they. And I used to know on top of my head how many accounts the Department of Revenue values for this, um but I. It's escaped me, but it's going to be probably, you know, seventy-five percent of the value of the county is part of the revenue control.
On on the Certy SIP, is that, how many years you left on?
Uh two thousand thirty-one will be this last year, you can go ahead and go to the next one. They have a, they had a predetermined payment schedule um. That was negotiated at the time uh the S I P was negotiated, so um I. I I like, this is easy for me, I don't have to do any calculations, I I already did that when we came up with the schedule two thousand fifteen or sixteen. Go ahead, Matt. And then uh P G E does own a portion of the Wheat Ridge Project um. So uh P G has an S I P payment of almost seven hundred thousand. One hundred and sixty-five thousand of that is the community service fee and the balance is the additional. Comes to the county, county does not share the community service fee, um this was the exempt tax amount. Um and the exempt value, and interesting, you know, uh hundred megawatt. Wind farm is only worth half as much as that uh uh. You know, gas-fired, five hundred megawatt project.
And that's why. And takes a one hundred percent.
Yeah, just it is interesting.
I think you did a spreadsheet for me one time and all the wind and solar make, does about five hundred megawatts in one county, yeah. One gas ton, right?
Yes. Right, right. Bigger thirty to thirty-five percent of that. And then uh next era, you know, they still control two thirds of the existing or the built out, what's built out so far. Of the um Wheat Ridge Project, their payment is one point eight million. Uh their portion of community service fee is three hundred thirty-five thousand and then the balance of a million dollars um. For the additional amount, and then uh another calculation for the solar, uh four hundred thirty-two thousand. That comes to the county. And they're exempt, oh. Yeah, they're exempt uh tax amounts, four point four million, exempt value is three hundred and seven thousand. That's for both next era's portion of the wind and the solar, they they do own a hundred percent of the solar. Uh and we have a smaller project, it's I think forty-eight or fifty megawatts um and it hooked. Right, just west and adjacent, almost in the middle of part of it, the Echo Project um. We uh negotiated a um. They negotiated a a payment schedule for the additional payment, they they. Wanted some extra cash for themselves in the first few years and would pay the balance in the last year. Yeah, yeah, uh and and it worked out good for them um. And so. Then it it's uh started its exemption the same year as Wheat Ridge. I think they borrowed some equipment, uh you know, the cranes and stuff to set up those uh. Ten year or twelve, twenty-four towers or sixteen towers, sixteen towers. It's kind of insignificant, but it is an S I P project, so I. So this is just kind of a summation of all of the S I P um. Properties, uh total additional payment is of four point eight million, uh total community service fee of one point six million. Um the total of their exempt taxes, uh almost seventeen and a half million and. And uh one point two billion of exempt value. This is gonna change dramatically when uh Amazon bombing Range Rover site comes in. Get some more money there um. Now let's zip on over to Enterprise Zone. So the, start with Columbia River Technologies, uh we're Tillamook um. Their payment to the CRES two this year was uh just over a million dollars, forty-six thousand of that um. Is uh their bond uh payments that were negotiated in those agreements for. Uh BMCC bond and Oregon Parks and Rec Bond and the Boardman Fire Rescue. Um and then a million dollars went to Chris two. Their exempt tax amount this year was just over a million dollars, exempt value is about eighty million. This was a ten-year exemption and this was the final year, so it will, that eighty million or what's left of it will go on the roll next year. Um and then Columbia River Technologies has a hundred thousand dollar buyback option, so they can. You know, take a hundred thousand dollars off of their uh payment to the CRES board if they. Uh some some people call direct spending, if they will, you know, spend it within Maro County. Uh you know, give it to the school, give it to the Cub Scouts, the league or church group or.
Uh now, on the exempt value that's coming out and say what's left of it, does the state. Do they set the depreciation schedule and give that to you ahead of time or no? Year to year, year to year, okay.
I receive values for these properties of for um industrial properties. I start receiving them like in April and I'll get them usually by about July first. Um sometimes August first, so um. You know, I I have staff that processes those and inputs them into our tax system. I glance over them, but I had them, you know, look at any big value swings, big question, any big value swings, you know, because layer the other.
You know, we've been talking about some about uh future revenues to the county. And if you're trying to project when the projects start coming out. There's no way you can really do it because you don't know what the appreciated value is.
Yeah, right, right, and well, it depends, you know, if it's a new type of property, no. Um but uh existing, if it's a. You know, wind's been around long enough now, there's other counties, Sherman and Gillum that went out way before we did. You know, I can do some modeling, I can get some information from, you know, those counties to, you know, model some stuff um. It's not an exact science, but more of a wizard work and, you know, that's how I. I I try to model things for my district uh budget estimates every spring too. But, you know, I I mean, sometimes things happen for really odd reasons, you know, I, you know, the Certy Plant, you know. Two hundred and fifty million issue.
Surprise.
Yeah, it wa- it was a surprise. Um but it really didn't affect anybody because it's exempt.
Right, but it just shows you.
Right, right, and and whether.
Surprise factor.
Yeah, whether the Department of Revenue values a property or I value it and it's under exemption. You know, we have to value it as if it was taxable um. So, you know, when I when I give you exempt values and exempt taxes, I mean, that's what they would have been. So it's not, you know, something just pulled out of the air, we do a complete valuation on them, that's. You know, when I say it takes me ten times as much work to do uh to. For an enterprise zone exemption as it does to just tax it, because we have to do all that work like we're going to tax it. Plus we have to do all this extra stuff too to not tax it. Columbia River Technologies, uh with their exemption, they negotiated a a graduated payment schedule to sort it out. You know, smaller in the beginning and then escalating to the end. Lamb Western. One point three million dollar payment to the CRES board, uh four hundred thousand and changes that for the uh. Um uh bonds, um City of Boardman, Boardman Park, Boardman Fire. Rescue and uh BMCC, and then nine hundred fifty thousand went to CRES two. Um their exempt exempt tax amount, two, almost two point seven million um. Over a hundred and fifty million of exempt value um. There and this was the tenth year of their fifteen-year extension. And they also have a hundred thousand dollar buyback or direct spend option. And and most. Most of the uh enterprise zone agreements that have a buyback option, those those companies utilize that. Uh Amazon didn't for the first several years, but they're using it now.
That's my next question is, how much of that, I hadn't think they've been using a hundred percent or?
Uh excluding Amazon, everybody uses a hundred percent and um. I I monitor that, I. I I used to request like the return of checks and this and that, and I just have them list out what they send and um. If somebody from the Enterprise Zone Board wants me to follow up with the spring documentation, I'm more than happy to do that. But I truly believe all those companies are being truthful and spending that money.
One of the things, you know, my personal opinion is, is you know, it's a great thing for them in that. When somebody sees their name on the scoreboard or the fence. They don't realize that it's the taxpayer dollar that's paying for that, that it's not really coming from the company, you know, it could have been paying taxes, but. But the perception is that.
Well, yes, and but and I think the the initial intent was that. To get these companies in the habit of doing that, even after the exemption's over with. And uh, you know, just being good neighbors and partners to the communities that that are affecting.
So I'm pretty sure we all will test out their reason when they come out.
Yeah, you know, and and this is Tillamook's second um exemption, their first one was their original plant, this was for the wave plant.
Yeah.
Um and, you know, Tillamook's been pretty good about. Generally support, you know, F F A and four H and things a lot.
But at the end of the day, it doesn't affect the bottom line, cause they're gonna be paying either the hundred thousand dollars. To their or to the county.
Right, but if they continue that after, that's important after.
Yeah, that's the idea is to get them in in having doing it. That gave you time to tell.
So you you brought up the Granger's uh grain handling facility. So it was a five-year exemption, um the total of this was about seventy million dollars, they reported their costs to me. Um their exempt tax amount was uh eighty-eight thousand and changed this year. An exempt value about six point seven million um. They revealed sixteen hundred dollars for that portion of the important fire bond um and then. Per the agreement, uh payment of thirty thousand dollars in year four or five was to be made, but. Uh all of it can be utilized as a buyback option. Um interestingly enough. And I got the, I I I bill them for it, you know, whether they do the buyback or not, I bill them. And uh they sent a check for thirty thousand dollars and so I reached out to Kevin Gray that. Um, you know, boss manager and said, you guys can spend this in other ways if you want. Said to give it into the CRES board and he said he'd forgotten that, so they, he came right up and drafted a check and uh. I think they spread it out throughout the communities. I think they spread it out throughout communities. Uh I haven't got any gotten any balance, so I'm assuming the full thirty thousand.
That whole that whole project wasn't. Under the enterprise on the practice, other companies that helped in that.
W O F P N W three mile project, I'm not sure what W O F with P N W stands for, but. Basically what this is, is out of through Alcanian Farms, they're collecting dairy waste. Um and um creating methane gas out of it and then piping that methane gas over to the Cardi Coogen plant. This uh was a five year exemption of an investment of thirty-seven million. Um a company called Brazilian I G purchased a portion. Uh that from Free Mile Canyon Farms in twenty twenty. Their exempt tax about five hundred ninety-eight thousand, almost six hundred thousand, uh this is fourth year of their. Five year exemptions, they have one year left. They make a payment to Chris board, um sixty-one thousand, which half of that can be utilized as a buyback option. And then a little over three thousand dollars was billed for the board of the fire bond.
Just curious, you don't know offhand if they get carbon capture credits for that or they could.
I don't know, um.
I just wondered if that was part of the valuation, you value a project on there because. Well, for instance, didn't they have a uh. A generator that presses and that and methane coming off the Finna Buttes.
Yes, I was family bioenergy.
And you know, that's a moneymaker, I wonder if they count that as part of the value of that generator, you know.
I'm sure.
And when you tax it, you know, it's makes so much on carbon.
Right, and that that family bioenergy just got bought out as well. And they're looking at doing some expansion there and just this, the they're the the current facility. It's been there for ten or fifteen years, I think they buried a lot more garbage in the last ten or fifteen years, so I think they're looking to expand that.
You're still making power one.
Oh yeah, yeah, and it uh what's kind of neat about that is uh the I D dehydration plant is right across the street. Or now, yeah, well, uh no, um. The I D dehydration plant uses the cooling water from those generators to preheat their. Uh dryers and it saves them about ten grand a month in natural gas. It is, it's really neat, uh methane is really, at least garbage methane is really dirty though. And there's a lot of eight, some of those diesel generators.
I used to build a guy that had, you sort of, you tear those open, they are full of crap.
You know, they have uh, you know, new cylinders, pistons, parts right there. You know, half the day they're, they have an engine right built back up. Uh so move on to Amazon, I might have skipped one, uh not on a slide, but um the hotel. Um they're in Boardman, Boardman Sleep and this it had a enterprise on exemption. Hotels and motels are the only commercial operation can uh take advantage of enterprise on exemption and so. Because of five or six million dollar property and and they just get three years, they don't have to make any payments to anybody, they just get a three year exemption. This will be the last year of that. Amazon, um currently they have five operational sites, uh the first two sites um. I refer to as Lewis and Clark, one S Street and Ripley Road. Uh Amazon uses P D X numbers and I'm. It's great to me, I I like to name them by, you know, their physical site. So the the those were constructed back in two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen, I think. Yeah, they had several different agreements from those years. Uh the two thousand thirteen fourteen agreements have all expired, the two thousand sixteen agreements. For the most part will be done uh after this year, uh well, after last year, I guess. And Amazon wanted a kind of a graduated payment schedule with these. So we kind of peaked on their payments to the Chris board. They're tapering off now. Uh so Lewis and Clark one, their payment was just under three hundred thousand dollars with an additional, almost thirty thousand dollars. Uh for their bonds, um Ripley Road, a little more than that, um. Uh four hundred thousand dollars and then your bond amount. Just a a different negotiated uh way to calculate the bond between those two agreements is why the bond station. Then the remaining three operational sites uh referred to as Lewis and Clark two, which that's located at where Lewis and Clark meets seven thirty. At intersection, um Olson Road, which is uh closed and inside the city of of Boardman there. That guards Lawson Road, which is um you know, north of the original. Or the other two Lewis and Clark sites. And these have long term rural fifteen year exemptions. Now Lewis and Clark two was the first one, uh began in two thousand nineteen, Olson Road, um in two thousand twenty. And oh, this is. I sent you the wrong, I didn't send you the updated one, uh there and there, Doris Lawson, um. Actually, twen- two thousand twenty-two was the first year of this. Like I said, all three of these have a fifteen year long term rural enterprise zone exemption. The negotiated agreement says there's a million dollars for building. Uh located at the site with a minimum payment of two million dollars per year, so. If they ever you ever build one building, they would always pay two million dollars. Then there's an additional payment calculation of uh twenty-five million dollars times property late. Uh property tax rate in that area for that year, and then that twenty-five million is indexed three percent a year. Uh to just try to amend it, you know, the assessed value three percent increase. Uh similar to what the uh community service fee uh is related to the S I P program.
A couple of years ago. They uh negotiated with the county to be able to put in those mini data centers. You know, because of the security, there's some of the companies wanted, they never did build any of those.
Yep, they have two of them.
Are they, are they uh?
There would be an additional sixty thousand dollars uh payment for building because they're.
They're small, yeah.
Yeah, they they reported, they reported one at the Lewis and Clark two site for a couple of years. And then they also built one at the Ricky Road site, but they never reported it. Um until this year, so I had to back down for a couple of years. Yeah, so Lewis and Clark two site is built out, you know, so um. Oh, so why is that? Maybe this is the one I had to back down for, Lewis and Clark two site. It must be the one. Uh because that's an odd number. The five million, yeah, I had to, I had to back them in for something, I had that, I'm sorry, I was mistaken then. Uh then the additional amount, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, um the Olson Road site, um. Four million, you know, two million dollars for building, or excuse me, one million dollar for building and they have four buildings. Um and then their additional amount is five hundred thirty-four thousand. Why that's so much greater than like the Lewis and Clark site and the Garson Lawson site is. The Olson Road site is located inside the city limits of Boardman, city limits of Boardman has a higher tax rate. Or Swanson, uh last year was their first year, uh so they had paid two million dollars plus the additional amount. Are you getting all this, Don?
That is.
Okay, well, you're typing. I'm trying to talk faster, go on dude. So I just total for Amazon, um you know, total exempt tax amount of sixty-six million, that's about. Almost ten million of what we actually levy collected, um exempt value of four point four million. And uh when the total of about a V Z payments, thirteen million. I should also, I should have had on here what they're paying taxes to, that will be in the slide. Further on. So standard easy exemptions are three to five years, um. Um they tend to have a larger extension percentage, their long term early easy exemptions, what I mean is, you know, uh. In the first three or five years, there's more value attributed to it because, you know. It's newer, no depreciation stuff, so if you look at, I started getting eighty percent. Uh you know, exemption where like uh long term rural or even S I P, if you. Look at the whole fifteen years, you know, year one, they're, you know, worth a billion dollars, year fifteen, they're worth. You know, two hundred thousand and spread that around, then their exemption doesn't look so large.
Yeah, you've explained that many times.
Yeah, I leave that in. Yeah, they look, yeah.
They've got this lots of that eighty and that's about.
You know, and the percent of exemption will change from year to year, um. It will look at, just look at P G E and the Cardi plant, it changed dramatically. From uh you know, six hundred million dollars to three hundred eighty. You know, you know, a full analysis should be performed at the end of the exemption period, you know, when when I first.
I've heard that so many times, you know, that people just don't want to listen to that.
Yeah, you know, when. When we started with enterprise zones and S I P stuff, you know, back in the two thousands, you know, early two thousands. No one really knew what they were doing, um and so we, the county and the commission at the time. Um kind of took the approach of, okay, schools will be held whole. So let's just take them out of the mix and leave everybody else and the. Uh you know, all the other districts in there and uh try to model something that. Basically paying half or sometimes two thirds of what they would have been taxed, you know, just excluding schools. And that's a pretty good approach, that's that worked pretty well, um but then as. You know, companies like Amazon and uh the uh when people started coming. You know, there's different dynamics involved and and then. There was some uncertainties that those companies wanted, they want to know how much they're gonna pay every year. And you know, for their financing, for the board of directors or whatever, um but I'd still like to see. The county takes some kind of approach like that in any future negotiations, at least some kind of baseline to model, you know. Uh and 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 I'm happy to help with that.
Baseline in far as how where to start.
Yeah, you know, so.
You took the, what what's the, what's the percentage, I was told one time that. Uh Agland, Moore County has a sixty-seven percent reduction.
That depends from year to year too, I'm not sure.
No, I mean, but you know.
But yeah, especially resource.
Thirty-three percent of the baseline, same as that.
Yeah, farmer forest. Right, but um. That's true, the but there's still. Uh value to the improvements they're doing there that need to be taken in consideration.
Well, no, we have the whole package. Yeah, I mean, a farm doesn't have a lot.
And the 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 land is always taxable, like on a wind project, we can't, you can't extend, you can't extend new property. Gotcha, so they're always taxable and 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 that land's going from a, uh you know, anywhere from a. Fifty to a hundred dollar acre value to a four thousand dollar acre value, all that. When they, when they build the solar uh or the wind.
Well, something along those lines is a year ago, maybe not that long ago, I was looking at the difference in value of the. Ground where the long range data is everything built. I was able to look at your information and the year prior, when it was strictly farmland, the tax bill was like six thousand dollars. The next year, when all done, it's its own change, I didn't really start, it definitely didn't have any built, so I'll know that you can start pushing it through there. The tax bill was like thirty-six thousand dollars, it's like six times the amount that the county collected in taxes with just its own thing. The F V round to industrial now.
Yeah, there's a. You know, it's still trying to refine how you tell the public what the value is for the Amazon. So if you can build a private zone, that's very difficult, you know, that yourself.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, but they did get, now, they did, we did get the uh bonded debt. That's the thing, that was a political football, time bomb, whatever you want to call it, and it was off. The first two, wasn't it? So because they wanted a, like you just said, they wanted to know exactly what their payments could be over there. That was always their argument.
Right, and then, you know, remember they gave us uh. A ceiling and we want a floor, and they came back and they up the ante some.
I know, and but they, at least the the terminology bonded debt. Is is off the table as far as being used as a political football now because they are.
Right, and and because of these uh large fact exemption programs that are not just unique tomorrow county. We're in competition with other counties, with even other states.
Sometimes you get the exempted tax or you get no tax.
Yeah, no, all these things, no, I'm just thinking of easier ways to explain to the public, you know, it's a hell of a.
Right.
Because it's, it's seems like it's a constant argument.
And it's, it's. For that reasoning that in my mind, everyone loses if we're competing against each other on that, who will take the lowest bid.
And I think that's something that made progress. There's a lot of parody, hopefully, counted account here, they don't really try to explain, I don't feel like they tried to play us.
Right, well.
As much, not to.
Just, I I think that depends, we're aware of the situation too, so. You know, we we may try to ask for something, but we're trying to ask for up here.
One year, I think the tribes are. Uh hinted that they were gonna play the sip. We're just curious about what we could get for a sip, you know, if we've been melted in the sip. This is what the president asked the county, not that we're gonna play you guys off against each other, yeah, then why are you asking?
Now, yeah, I think that that was more of a former commissioner that instigated that.
Yeah, right.
You know, for enterprise zone, um. Chris board, uh with fifteen million dollar payments, this is before any of the buybacks or anything. Bond payments, five hundred thousand and uh. Exempt taxes, seventy million. You know, as exempt value four point seven million. I know we have a lot of systems, but we give up a lot of stuff to happen.
No, and there's consequences for that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, that's why I'm a proponent of, you know. We're getting these extra S I P monies and if we get, the county gets enterprise own monies. We have to use that money to fund county functions because, you know, we're exempting two thirds of the value of our county, but we have all that work to do. Top taxpayers this year. Amazon was basically their first two sites, um paying the bulk. Um you know, of the fifty-seven million we levied, they're paying, you know, over a third of that.
Well, last year was it an eleven million last year?
It was about seventeen, I think.
Seventeen, the year before that, I think it was.
Um and then, you know, you add up all the rest, you know, it would come close to the twenty-one million.
Uh one year we added nineteen and it still didn't get to the, the next nineteen.
It's the same way, you know, not even half.
And it used to be that Portland General Electric was at the top of that, yes, years, right. Well, see, this to move down, it's the number two. Yeah, Lamb Weston with that new expansion. Yeah, Land Weston with that new expansion.
Uh, it's not on yet.
Oh, it's not on yet?
The, uh. They, they must have done some free, uh, investment in some of their current plans to get that value up. Everyone's done looking at them. It's kind of a snapshot of the last ten years. Uh, market value for the county, assessed value with tax, so ten years ago, we're. Three billion R M V, uh, one point seven billion A V and twenty-seven million in taxes, so. We've, we've tripled our R M V, we've, uh, more than doubled our A V and we've more than doubled that certain type of tax. And just kind of a synopsis, um. You know, market value is mostly due from the new industrial utility value, uh. Uh, on the market side, uh, the A V, uh, you know, it's not proportional. Because a lot of this is exempt, um, but as those exemptions expire, then it does increase. For major wind projects, uh, two of them are, uh, you know, their exemption is expiring. This year, uh, will be on the rolls this upcoming patch year, um. Kness has got four years left, I think, um. Uh, Lamb Weston, uh, don't, excuse me. Tilburg is off this year, uh, we won't be seeing any large, uh, exemptions for a while until. Lamb Weston in four years and Kness for years, we'll see if they're big jump. You know, Amazon continues to invest. I believe the, um. Bobby Green's roadside will be up and running, uh, at the end of this calendar year. And I don't think that the second, um, or Swanson site might be up and running by then as well. It's exciting and, and, and again, there's still, uh. Subdivisions and partitions, uh, all throughout the county going on, so there's, there's, you know, happening. Which is exciting. Keeps my staff busy.
Yeah. How is the subdivision type one, is that? Are they actually having people, are the people living there yet?
I don't think so, um, I'm not sure, um.
Does that change their taxable?
Oh, yes.
So those are obviously starts that's.
Well, right, I mean, they don't have any exemption, but as, as they build structure, not like there's those apartment buildings. Uh, I'm not sure how close they are to, you know, having people start.
I know they're taking applications.
Yeah. Uh, but you know, the, the one of. The port we once, they were full before they even were done.
Yeah.
And to assume this might be a similar situation and. But I think that, uh, they've started on a few of the townhouses there. I haven't been over there in a while, but.
And the condos are actually gonna be real mar, real value, real property values, people are gonna own, correct? Or is that still paid through a tax base?
Uh, well, I, I don't know for sure. I was told that they were apartments, not condos.
They were having some townhouses, I thought, right, or somewhere north side.
Yeah.
Anyway, people will actually own those.
That's yes, so, and like maybe that's what they're calling. Yeah, yeah, like the townhouse type deal.
But they would be, they would be owned.
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay, well, that'll be a difference, that'll be individual tax base versus multi-family.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because they're their own lot. Um, and we should still see values increase from new residential, commercial, industrial development as long, as well as some expiring exemptions. Uh, just not to the extent we've, extent we have seen in the past five years with those. First initial Amazon sites coming along. You know, it started out with a two billion dollar value and at the end, you know, they're about one point three. So, I'm quite half. But, you know, when you can talk into billions, uh, there's really nothing to sneeze in. Yeah, I just. Two, the two new sites and five more after that. In many, many partition and subdivision class, I think in two thousand twenty-two, we had. Over thirty partitions and I can't remember how many subdivisions, which is a record. I mean, we had, we had, you know, ten, twelve partitions and two subdivisions in the year, we were busy. Any questions?
So, you know, I've got the thinking, so the, um, first twenty-five million dollars in enterprise zones for the data centers.
Okay, okay.
So does that calculation show up in the enterprise zone thirteen million dollars or does that show up in the twenty-one million dollars of the tax?
So you're talking about the current three, um. Amazon agreements or long-term rural that have that additional twenty-five million?
Right.
That's included in that thirteen million.
Okay.
That's not a tax, that's just, it's, it's kind of like a tax, you know, but.
It's calculated as a tax, right, goes up in that thirteen million enterprise, okay.
So initially, uh, with, with those sites, those enterprise own agreements were being negotiated. Amazon did not like the bond language, uh, their concern was, you know. Seattle. And just didn't want to take on that kind of liability, um, so it was suggested that, um. Okay, instead of, of that bonding language, let's create this other. calculation, you know, for a payment, and if a bond comes along, we'll figure out a way to shovel somebody out to that district to. To, you know, help, help with that. That hasn't happened, but that was just kind of, uh, you know, a negotiation point that.
That was, I remember that, we sat there in the crowds and we got down to board and mayor said. I don't know what you're talking about and if I don't know, how am I gonna explain it to the tax base? You know, alternate, it, it, it worked, but it was really not, not. Well, we were coming off huge criticism over the bonded debt at that point, that was what was driving that. Uh, and so everybody was looking for. A clean answer, you know, and that was not there, but. It would have got us to the same place, but.
Yeah, or it would have been something.
Yeah, pretty foolish, yeah. But we're, we're in a good place now, say we go to school. If they pass the school bond, everything's here to play again.
I, I sent you an email, Valerie, was that?
So can I share my screen? Cause I've got.
So this is just a chart kind of showing, you know, who gets what for taxes and I, I will have this published on my website. I have a, uh. It's a couple of years old now, you know, so, um. You know, the. The brown, I'm colorblind, I think.
Schools.
Yeah, schools, you know, I get.
Thirty-seven percent?
Yeah, thirty, thirty-something.
Almost thirty.
Yeah, the county gets.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Um, you know, anyway, you can, you can read it, you can see it. Just kind of shows where the money goes, how it's divided up between, you know, cities, fire districts. Uh, or borderman's early renewal cemetery district, uh, parking wreck districts. I have a state fire patrol in there.
What's the bottom blue and say, yeah, health district, health district.
Yeah, um.
Six point five one percent.
So any privately owned ground in the national forest, uh, Oregon Department of Forestry has, uh. Fire, uh. Control over that and they charge a fee, um, and county. Tax collectors, uh, assess that fee for, um. O D F, um, and then the treasurer distributes that fee. Uh, for free, O D F doesn't pay anything and it's an annual, it's a per acre charge, they have a minimum amount of eighteen dollars if it's a small acreage. Um, they have a, uh, it, what they call an improvement surcharge, so if you have a, a building or something on it, they won't fight the building, but they'll try to. Keep the fire from getting to it, um, that's another little charge, it's forty-five dollars, I think, you can calculate with Lake Ranch area. Yeah, Lake Ranch, Nilla Lake, any privately owned, uh, uh, the O H V park phaser.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's a dollar per acre rate, um, and there's two rates, one for timber and one for grazing, so like meadows and such. Don't pay as much as timber because it's either put out of. And then, and Moore County isn't, uh, O D F is, uh, got different districts or regions throughout the state and Moore County is in two separate. Central district and northeast district. And I think you can basically think of the western route, road, road fifty-three between. Gusworth Park and Utah is being the dividing line between, uh, northeast district being the north, central being to the south. And the central district is, uh, almost twice as much per acre as the northeast district. As a rate, and those rates almost doubled this year. And so, um. You'll get, I don't know, maybe, uh, Kevin noticed with the tax bills for the. Uh, O H V park, you know, several thousand acres, if it's three bucks an acre, then that's several thousand dollars, uh, probably. Notice that increase this year, maybe then. Okay, so we have fire patrol, uh. And basically O D F, the legislature stored in O D F their funding. Um, from the general fund, so they have to make it up through this fire control assessment and. I, O D F, uh, did a, you know, uh. Kind of a reach out to us and gave us numbers for people to call because they were, knew they were gonna get questions and they. They got a lot of questions, you know, and Jim Kirkpatrick's large land on the right here, he might have a. Twelve hundred dollar tax bill on a twenty-five thousand dollar fire patrol. Um, that was interesting. Be nice to, uh. Figure out a better way to fund, um, fires.
Speaking of, especially districts, uh. You know, there's still, they're always grappling with Westland and their private road system, I mean, that's, you know. We brought it up the one that A O C, but apparently the. Dryanville, their counter down there was a bunch of, the guy didn't even wanna talk about it, they hate him, you know. Which I can see why, they're just a mess, and we got so, you know, I mean, you know. Lakes Ranch does, but they took care of their own, you know. But, you know, I kind of looked into, uh. How, how do you, how do you solve that? So, cause, uh. You know, some of the past, uh, road bosses used to just send a grater in there, you know, and do a little bit of work off the side, but. And you could set up a special district, if you get, I don't know if you know any of the rules on this.
I'm not that familiar, but.
Thirty percent of the landowners in a certain area.
Service district.
Yeah, and then you would tax a certain amount on all of them and then that would pay for the road to keep.
Yeah, they'd have an annual assessment, um, and so build a fund up for. So many years and then use it to, you know, haul in some gravel or pay for a contractor to do.
Yeah, a heck of a lot, but if you ever got to that point. Where, I mean, because I was at a, a, a public meeting one time and Oregon rural action people just were. Ripping us for not taking care of the roads out, because they were all out there for the water and they go. You, county needs to come in and say, I said, well, it's private roads, you know? So my proposal to one of the people that was ripping on me was, well, why don't you guys go out with petitions and get half those people signed up? And I was just hoping I had my back to them, you know, because I just got into researching it. But if they ever started in on that again and you had somebody that would go out with the community like that and get. And then you, you would tax that.
Like can, if it's set up right.
You, okay, but you would give the estimate on what? I mean, say, you, you get together there, how would this work? Okay, you'd get together with Eric and say, okay, a minimal amount, just put some gravel out there. You know, whatever, whatever it takes, a couple of years, what's it gonna cost, what's the county gonna bill, and then you could divide it up amongst and say. Is that, was that, is that logic?
That could be a, a way to.
When you went out to the community to get people to sign up, you say, okay, this is gonna cost you approximately.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever, on this particular.
Well, or, or just. It'd be more like a fee, uh, it, it. Creating some kind of rates would be, I, I don't know if you can, I don't know how that would work, a lot of those service districts, it's a fee. Black Mountain with their water and road, it used to be called Black Mountain Water District, but it handled the water system and the roads up there and, uh. Tax office used to assess those fees, um, and then we found out they didn't organize that district properly. Uh, so the county couldn't do it, but it was, it was a set fee for property.
And they do it like in H O A then?
They could, they could do it on their own, absolutely, absolutely, Lake Penlet does that.
Yeah, that was, yeah, Penlet has to.
Uh, they have a. You know, lot owners association and, uh, you know, they had money from the sales of lots over the years. Had contractors, you bought gravel and had volunteers, all the gravel, yeah, they could do it on their own without.
Which department in the county would be the driving, well, the, 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 this department that would. That would be responsible. Or if you're ready to go that route, but making sure that the district got organized, right?
Planning?
It would be court.
Well, they. Uh, it wouldn't be really. You know, there's no statutory thing saying it would be.
No, I mean, if you went to, you had to go to and say, okay, help us organize this thing.
This would be a, a special project. You'd have involvement of the administration, the planning department, probably assessment as well as clerk's office to overcome that.
Right, right, the, the. And, and, you know, they'd have to.
Be like building a, sort of door buildings.
We can talk to, you know, county council to help with some of, you know, what needs to be done, how they need to be organized. Uh, uh, you know, does there have to be an election to vote on the fee or how, how that works?
Yeah. Yeah, I like that idea, yeah.
Basically, I have a position open to help with that and B I O actions.
Uh, my other question on this is, last year, this, you've started showing this around.
Oh, yeah.
Do you, you took, how many places, do you remember offhand, how many places?
So I showed the Ford of Morrow, I showed, uh, Ike of O, the. I O, uh, economic development group, I showed the health district. Here.
Did you go to the city council?
I don't think so, I might have done, yeah.
Anyway, I, I mean, I, the people, I've just gotten good reports for this over the years, you've been doing it like, is this your third year? Anyway, doesn't matter, I just. It went over real well, I think, and, and I don't know, I would encourage you, if you're gonna do it, tiny value. But to. To make it, uh, make it known or available because it really is clear, I think, and it explains to people exactly. You know, all kind of cuts along. BS.
Then you could put it on the county website.
You could do that, but, you know.
No, I'm more than happy, I'm more than happy to, you know, go to any district or community or whatever.
At least he could explain. If it's on the county website, you get, that's nice, buddy.
Explains it and it's really, and it's clear and he answers questions and you just hear so much BS about it.
Well, that's, yeah, it's, well, it's a lot to talk, talk about, a lot of numbers, you know, each individual thing, you've got billions here, billions there, except this. Market value here, assessed value there, it is, uh. I, I hope I didn't tongue tie twist too much. I I hope I didn't tongue tie twist too much, so. Yeah, I I I needed a goal of mine when I became assessor, I wanted to be able to attend every district's budget meeting. I don't know about half done, you know, not all of them will invite me, but like, you know, giving a presentation basically for their district. But I've I've done it to several, and I enjoy doing that, I'm happy to do this, whatever. Even if Aaron wants me to come there again, I'm more than happy.
resize. Play more, he has to resize the window to display more or something.
He's he's a geek too, so he likes this stuff, right?
So I hope that be your department, I don't know if it's true or not, but I've heard the. Spur line that goes out to the old coal fire plant section, the P G U is going to turn that over to Union Pacific, Union Pacific was going to use it to store rail cars.
I haven't heard anything about that.
But if that happens, my recollection is that there's a fee assessed per car, is that right, for storage?
Well, there's a, um. Not necessarily for storage, for any rail car that goes through the county, we get a. Dollar amount.
Yeah, but there's no demerits fee.
Uh.
If they store it, then you'd be getting a demerits fee.
Yeah.
Seems like, you know.
I, well, may maybe through some other thing, but not through my department, we have what we call large rail car and small rail car. Um, uh, accounts, the large rail car is assigned a value to, and I make a tax account for them and charge. You know, Cargill and Chevron and T T X and, you know, I've got a whole list of. Railcar companies, they have small railcar companies, they must be under a certain value threshold. That the department of revenue collects some kind of tax for and then, you know, allocates some to Morrow County.
You you know, they do it on Willem every time.
Right, and that's.
Which isn't our county, but yeah, but.
But. And that might be.
Some down in there, and it came into Morrow County, you know, I'm recalling back to that industry and that, um. Then they quit doing it because they didn't, they didn't want to pay the.
The it's a demerits fee, it should be, it's, they're more than three days and they get demerits. Yeah, that's.
Well, I know, I know they do that on the rail spur on the port. There's a demerits fee of the rails in there. Um, so, and we will have it within, you know, within the rail spur in the terminal as well. So like I said, you know, I don't know how big my sources, but that's what I was told is that the spur line going out to. Um, yeah, this whole fire plant was turned over to a new P and he was going to use it to store cars.
Ten miles of rail, that's right.
I guess if we start seeing cars show up out there and then.
Alert Mike.
I will, I will alert the department of revenue and what they do with them, sometimes they don't care, you know, I. I can't remember, was this cell power or the one back up here? Um, you know. Couldn't, I think it was this one. There was no uh value in South County for um. U S cellular, this is the U S cell. Well, Department of, well, county didn't report anything. Well, let me take a picture of it and show it to you, I'll report it for you. It's really, you could see it at day and night in one place. They, the department reached out to, um, you know, the company and, oh, yeah.
You know, you guys got any more, if you got any more questions, the audience does. Big look there, definitely.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's a little later, I like giving this, uh, you know, like a month ago, first of December, but. And we were just so slammed with new staff, um, and then, and also, uh. State um Association County Assessors President this year. And they're putting on a conference uh next week, actually, in Hood River, um, so I've been busy with doing that.
Well, good presentation.
Okay, if you guys think of something in the middle of the night and want clarity on something, wait till the morning and.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys.
Okay. Anything else to add to this one subject or anything? Okay, we'll close the books this adjourned.